Take on the original Prince photo is not at all a copycat. And that's legally meaningful here, given the precedents and given the nature of the case.
Right. And other justices spoke in less highfalutin terms and were more skeptical of the Warhol Foundation's arguments. And Justice Alito, for instance, asked,
How is a court to determine the purpose or meaning of works of art like a photograph or a painting?
How am I supposed to decide what the meaning of an artwork is? That's, you know, not what I learned in law school.
You make it sound simple, but maybe it's not so simple, at least in some cases, to determine what is the meaning or the message of a work of art. There can be a lot of dispute about what the meaning or the message is.
And Alito says, you make it sound easy, but I'm not sure we're really up to the job. And other justices, also hostile to the Warhol Foundation, like justices Sonia Sotomayor or Neil Gorsuch, are focused on the practical questions in the case. The particular transactions between Vanity Fair and Conde Nast.
And what does Sotomayor have to say?
The specific use was of this one part of the Prince series, only one level of it, as a photograph in the life of Prince. Now, that use, you say on factor four, that it doesn't compete with Goldsmith's photograph, but hard to see how not.
Sotomayor says what's really at issue here is a narrow marketplace. It's the marketplace of selling pictures of Prince to magazines. And you could argue about all kinds of other uses of what Warhol can do and can't do. But if Lynn Goldsmith can sell photographs of Prince to magazines, and Andy Warhol is selling a photograph of Prince created by Lynn Goldsmith with some Warhol stuff on top of it to magazines, that, she says, is too close for comfort. That, she says, is what copyright is meant to protect, your opportunity to sell your work in the same marketplace as the other guy.
Hmm, in other words, they're both taking water out of the same well.
That's right. So by the end of the argument, it seemed that a majority, maybe a lopsided majority of the court, was prepared to rule for Goldsmith.
Okay, so walk us through the ultimate ruling in this case.
So in the end, the ruling was seven to two in favor of Goldsmith. Justice Sotomayor writes the majority opinion, and it kind of tracks her questioning at the argument, which focused on whether the Warhol Foundation was required to pay a fee to Goldsmith, at least in the context of licensing images to magazines. She says to hold otherwise would potentially authorize a range of commercial copying of photographs to be used for purposes that are substantially the same as those of the originals.
So the majority's ruling here is that this is ultimately a kind of small-scale copyright infringement, and Warhol owes Goldsmith money. But I'm struck by the language that Sotomayor uses, substantially the same. She's kind of taking the position that what Warhol did wasn't ultimately all that transformational of Goldsmith's original photograph.
That's right. And she's called out on that by the two dissenters, Chief Justice Roberts and Justice Kagan, that Sotomayor really minimizes what Warhol has done here. And Justice Kagan, who wrote the dissent, was quite slashing in criticizing what she viewed as a failure of imagination or taste or something by the majority. She wrote, "The majority does not see it." And I mean that literally. "There is precious little evidence in today's opinion that the majority has actually looked at these images, much less that it has engaged with expert views of their aesthetics and meaning." Kagan also, she says, "The majority decision will stifle creativity of every sort. It will thwart the expression of new ideas and the attainment of new knowledge. It will make our world poorer." So just as the majority tries to make the case small, the dissent says it's huge. The dissenters say it will affect not only visual artists, but writers and musicians and filmmakers. And some of them will try to license the underlying work that they want to build on and won't be able to afford that license fee, or maybe will be told that the underlying works owner is not interested in licensing something. And some others are going to think, "I would like to create new art that draws on old art, but I'm scared, and I'm going to go do something else instead." So there is good reason to think that Justice Kagan's dissent might be a little overblown, but at least at the margins, it might stifle some valuable artwork.
But of course, there's another way to see this outcome, Adam, which is that a new generation of artists born into the aftermath of a ruling like this sees borrowing from previous artists as too risky, and it unleashes a wave of original creative art and music and literature that is not as reliant on everyone and everything from the past. I would call that the glass-half-full interpretation of the Supreme Court case.
All right, that is a very nice optimistic idea that's at odds with millennia of experience of how art works.
Well, Adam, at the risk of being very derivative of what I say at the end of every episode, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Adam Liptak covers the Supreme Court for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Made in Cookware. Made in Cookware is crafted by chefs for use in restaurants and home kitchens around the world. Their cookware can be found at madeincookware.com. For everything you need to know about the most important stories of the day, you're listening to The Daily from The New York Times, distributed by American Public Media. APM produces and distributes programs that inform and inspire, entertain, and engage audiences everywhere.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Bobardo.
Next time on The World, many migrants have rebuilt their lives in Italy, but a new crackdown could change that.
This law is going against the Constitution, is going against immigration, and is going against human rights.
Italy's far-right government scrapped special protection permits. That's next time on The World.
Tune in for The World, Monday through Thursday afternoons at 3:00 on Radio IQ.
We are returning to our evening session for May 23, 2023. The board held its open session at 3:00 PM today, followed by a work session. Item L, public hearing and second reading of ordinances. The petition of Terrio and Lisa Comeros to remove the existing proffered conditions on approximately 14.713 acres of land zoned AVCS Agricultural Village Center District with conditions and special use permit and AR Agricultural Residential District located at 9651 Bent Mountain Road, 9744 Tinsley Lane, and 9786 Tinsley Lane, Windsor Hills Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The request you have before you tonight is to remove an existing proffered condition that was dated back to 2011, I believe, from rezoning. So the property is located on Bent Mountain, across from the VDOT maintenance facility up there, a little south of the fire station, fire and rescue station. It fronts both on Bent Mountain Road and Tinsley Lane. So it has the two addresses off of Tinsley Lane. Those are the two parcels that are to the west. And the main parcel, the larger parcel, is the 9651 Bent Mountain Road. Almost 15 acres. Currently, it's vacant. What they're requesting is to remove the proffered conditions from that previous rezoning. And we'll kind of go through that. Couple photos of the site. It's pretty level, site, grass, field. This is looking at it from, I think, Bent Mountain Road. You can see the VDOT facility off to the right. This is looking up Bent Mountain Road, and property's on the left. This is looking from Tinsley Lane. You can see the VDOT facility in the distance. But again, pretty flat piece of land, open, not many trees on it. This is the view from Tinsley Lane. Again, so kind of a little background. This property was rezoned from AR to AVC Agricultural Village Center District with conditions in 2011. At that same time, there was a special use permit granted for a convenience store. So the proffered conditions required development and substantial performance with the site plan, architectural renderings from the 2011 rezoning. And the special use permit is still valid under state code section. So typically, a special use permit is only valid for two years. And if they don't take after within that two years, then it becomes null and void. Back when we were in the recession of 2009, the General Assembly continued to extend the vesting right or that deadline further and further out, and that continued through the COVID pandemic. So this special use permit is still valid based on those actions by the General Assembly. So what the applicant is requesting is they have two lots they want to build single-family homes on. Those are the two off of Tinsley Lane. And so single-family dwelling is a permitted by right use in the AV and the AR district. However, the existing proffered conditions state development in performance with the site plan and the architectural renderings, and that shows a convenience store, an office building, and a private school with no residential units. Therefore, they have to remove those proffered conditions in order to be able to build on their property. So here are the renderings to the left and the site plan, concept plan on the right. So when Glenn Reed came through, I think this was shortly after the school on Bent Mountain was closed, and they were looking at potentially having a private school. And he also was looking at a convenience store and possibly at office use. So he resoned the whole property to AV. The school and the office use are a by right use in that district. The convenience store required a special use permit, which was also granted as well. So in the AV district, a convenience store, even with the special use permit, is still limited to 3,000 square feet in size. That's one of the use and design standards. So here are a couple of renderings that they're looking at for the two houses off of Tinsley Lane. Again, these aren't just kind of conceptual renderings of what they envisioned for those two lots. Existing zoning, most of it is that AVCS Agricultural Village Center with special use permit. And a little part of the property is AR. That was an additional lot they purchased outside of the original rezoning. To the north is AV, and to the east, west, and south is AR, which is Agricultural Residential Future land use designation is rural preserve. And again, single-family dwelling is an acceptable use type of destiny of one unit for three acres. So it is consistent with this future land use designation. So the planning commission did hold a public hearing. There were three citizens who spoke during the public hearing regarding a potential grocery store slash convenience store. Again, they raised these issues regarding the grocery store, warning wanting limited development on Bent Mountain, speeding on Bent Mountain Road, wondering if turn lanes would be required. There's no deed for the grocery store, convenience store, due to an existing business, and concerns over staffing at the Bent Mountain Fire and Rescue Station if a convenience store is constructed. So I want to talk about a little bit of some of the confusion. Our deadline for the application was early March, early March 10. And Jeff Sturgeon, who's a reporter for the Run-up Times, I think he always will contact us every once in a while about what's going on. And I think he saw this application, talked to the Comeros, and they had some, they talked about, there was an article in the paper about the potential for a grocery store, or them wanting to build a grocery store. Obviously, this property has the convenience store on the property. A grocery store, and he gave an example of, I believe, they were looking at was a Tom Leonard's Farmer's Market. So that actually, I looked that up earlier today just to make sure what that was. It would be classified as a grocery store if that's the type of thing that they wanted to build. So, yeah, the difference between a grocery store and a convenience store, yeah, they do have approval for the convenience store, but a grocery store of what they're looking at would actually require it to get a special use permit for what they kind of indicated. Anyway, so the applicant's representative at the planning commission meeting discussed the previous conditions on the property state that the intention of the parcels to build two single-family dwellings. They're not asking to remove the existing special use permit. They want to leave that as a possible option in the future. But there's no concrete plans to develop a convenience store, and you'd want to go back to the community and get feedback before reconstructing anything on that property. The planning commission clarified that the petition is to remove the proffered conditions to allow for the construction of two single-family homes. The special use permit for a convenience store is still valid, that a grocery store would be classified as retail sales and would require a special use permit in the AV district, and that a convenience store is limited in size to 3,000 square feet, as well as retail sales is also limited to 3,000 square feet in the AV district. They discussed the construction of the two residential homes, being consistent with the rural preserve, future land use, destination, and the county's comprehensive plan, and that the applicant should be able to build the single-family residences on their property. So the planning commission did recommend approval of removing the proffered conditions on the three parcels. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Seth? I think this is his district actually, and then I'll get.
But I've got, I know what I'm going to do, so let him go ahead and say what he wants.
Say what you want, Mr. Phil.
I'm so impressed with you, Mr. Rafferty. So the special use permit is still in effect.
Correct.
So it's only last, only good for two years, right?
Well, well, normally, under our ordinance, it is. But as I mentioned, that the General Assembly keeps adding or extending that deadline. So they've extended it since 2011, and it's still valid today. So that's 12 years. It's been, and part of that's been.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So it's been the recession. I think, you know, when the recession hit, they wanted to give developers or builders the right to continue to potentially have those vested rights without having to go back and get that approval. And then I think COVID hit, and they also continued that extension. Now, at some point, I would imagine they're going to stop that.
Well, when is it, when does it end today is what I'm asking.
I don't know. I asked Becky, our zoning administrator, if it was still valid. She looked into it, and she said it's still valid and gave them.
Does it expire at this year?
I don't know what the date is. I just know that right now it's still valid. But at some point, I would imagine that will stop. And then whenever that deadline is and passes, if it hasn't been built, that's when it will expire.
Okay, so when does the clock start? Under the current approval with the special use permit, or if today, when this rezoned occurs, does that give life further to the special use permit for two years from today?
No, this has nothing to do with the special use permit.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Mr. Rafferty.
I'm well-read on it. I know the property really well. Haven't met the owners yet, so I'll hear from them here shortly. But I don't really have anything.
Okay, so we'll hear from the petitioner. If they want to come forward, please.
Hey, y'all. My name's Andrew Stover, and I represent Terrio and Lisa Comeros. For y'all that don't know me, my name, I just said that, Andrew Stover. I'm an attorney here at OPM Law, just right down the road. Phil pretty much covered everything, even the little bits that I was going to just brush up on regarding the last hearing. The chatter about the convenience store was, was, maybe didn't come about in the best way, but it was really, it was a function of folks reaching out in the community to the Comeroses. They thought it was something that people wanted based on people that had approached them. So they were trying to be receptive. They wanted to build these homes, and it was really an effort to blend in with the community and, rather than stir things up. So like Phil mentioned, there's no concrete plans to pursue the convenience store. Right now, the main goal is to build two single-family residences on the parcels that front Tinsley Lane and go from there. So I don't have much to add on that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Mr. Rafferty?
Actually don't.
Anybody else, any other questions? Any questions? I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And so just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak if you have signed up for this petition. I don't believe we've had any for this one, though. So now I will close the public hearing, and if there aren't any further questions from the board, I'll accept a motion.
Yeah, I'll give you a few comments, and then I'll move into the motion. So I was up at the Bent Mountain Community Center. We were celebrating the 10th anniversary, and that article had just come out in the paper. And so never met the owners, but I caught myself going around the room trying to defend free enterprise and the best I could. And I said, "What's wrong with having, you know, competition up on top of the hill?" And so I was being very delicate as I bounced around the room. But there were people that, they just didn't know enough, and the story was a little misleading. You know, so this kind of clears it up. Really, it's a no-brainer. That's got to be the flattest land I have seen in 35 years of building houses. That's, it's incredible piece of land. So it's beautiful. Really, it's a no-brainer. So I'm going to go ahead and go with the motion. I find that the proposed rezoning request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan and good zoning practice. Two, it will not result in substantial detriment to the community. Therefore, I move that we approve the rezoning request as it has been requested and remove the one proffered condition existing on the properties. That's the motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Noor?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes.
Mrs. Sucker?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. So item two, the petition, thank you, thank you very much. Petition two is of Hugo Jimenez to rezone approximately 1.24 acres of land from C1, Low Intensity Commercial District, to I1, Low Intensity Industrial District, and to two, obtain a special use permit to operate a construction yard located at 5681 Starkey Road, Cave Spring Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson again.
Yeah, this one's a little more challenging. So this property has seen a variety of actions over the years, from the commercial activity and removal of conditions and so forth. So this property is not very far from here, just down Starkey Road on the other side of Friendship Rehab South. So it's almost to the intersection of Starkey and Mountain, where they're in the process of constructing the roundabout. As you mentioned, it's 5681 Starkey Road. It's 1.24 acres. It's currently not being used. The previous use was for a language club in the buildings that are there. So the proposed, it's a proposed rezoning and special use permit for a construction yard for a landscaping business. Property does, has floodway and floodplain on the property, which covers a good portion of it. Couple photos. This is looking at the front of the property, looking towards the roundabout projects and the construction. Kind of see the one entrance and the sign, and then you see gravel enters in the forefront here. Those are the two access points that they have on the property. And the existing sign, they intend to just use that, reface that existing sign. Existing building, as you see, it's pretty flat in the floodplain, has a paved drive with six parking spaces, has a building in the back. Here's this, another entrance that goes along the other property. It's the gravel road driveway. It's kind of along the creek. You see the buffer along the creek, looking back to the accessory building in behind it. This is behind that accessory building. And here is the actual accessory building. They're going to store some of their equipment, and I think their bags of ice melt they talked about putting in there as well. Again, the house that will be used as an office. And here are the parking spaces, the six existing parking spaces that are on site. So the challenge we have with this use is trying to figure out what to classify it as. And, you know, in our ordinance, it's, if you can't find an exact match, you go to the closest thing that would fit it. And so in this case, construction yard is that use that was determined by the zoning administrator to be the closest thing that we have. So those are settlements, housing facilities of business permanently engaged in the construction activities, including outside storage of materials and equipment. Typical uses are building contractor yards, to the landscaping business. The construction yard does require a, is only permitted in the I1 district with an approved special use permit. It's only allowed in the AV district with a special use permit, I1 district with a special use permit, and I2 district is a by right use. Those are only three districts it's allowed in. Here's their concept plan that's in your packet. They're going to use the two existing buildings. The principal building is roughly a little over 2,000 square feet. They'll use that for office space. The detached garage will have indoor storage, where they'll have small tools, the mulchblower, air compressor, and the bags of ice melt. They do have two existing entrances off of Starkey Road, the asphalt access drive and the gravel access drive. Six existing parking spaces. They have a new crushed gravel tie-in to the existing gravel access, so intended to come in one way and go out the other way. They do have a new crushed gravel parking area for vehicles and equipment. They show a 50-foot-long evergreen tree buffer, so that's kind of near in front of the office or you go south of the office in front of, to the south of the paved driveway, there's a row of evergreen trees they're going to plant, and there's two on the northern side next to the existing access gravel as well. And then utilize the existing sign and landscape around that. This area has a mixture of zoning. So it's Zone C1, which is Low Intensity Commercial District. To the north is C2CS. That's for Friendship Rehab South. To the east is C1 at R3, which is multifamily residential. To the west is C2, and to the south is C1 as well, which is Low Intensity Commercial. So core is the designation. Again, has a variety of appropriate land uses, including general retail shops, apparel services, offices, and institutional uses, and limited industrial uses. So from a staff perspective, we say it's consistent. Again, we'll talk about this a little bit, about the limited industrial use. We are looking at this business more as a commercial venture with restrictions on the uses that are allowed, that they proffered, and also the concept plan is why we think it is consistent with the core designation. Public hearing was held on May 2. There were seven citizens who spoke. Six were in opposition, one in support. Concerns raised, the project not being compliant with the limited industrial use type being in an economic opportunity area under the core future land use designation in the county's comprehensive plan. The flood-prone nature of the parcel does not align with the purpose statement of the I1 zoning district. The potential increase in traffic, noise levels, pollution, stop. I1 zoning district, the potential increase in traffic, noise levels, pollution, stockpiling of materials in the floodplain, and the number of vehicles and equipment to be parked on the property. So, when we talked about the economic opportunity, under the core designation says limited industrial as long as in accordance with the economic opportunity areas, or is in an economic opportunity area. So, in the 1998 comp plan, there's this map and has not been updated since 1998. But it identified certain commercial or industrial or other uses as part of that, and there was different maps at the county. This is the one that is particular to this area. This was the comment that was raised by the citizens. So, 904 is Starkey Road. So, you don't see anything on Starkey Road. You also don't see the commercial that's on Starkey Road. But this is the thing that they're talking about and referencing, that economic opportunity area map. Public hearing, there's also the property owner spoke on behalf of the applicant. She focused on the quality of work and the character of the applicant, affirmed that the applicant has been providing services to the local community for over two decades and does not maintain any debris or landscaping materials on the premises. She asserted that the applicant's business will not result in influx of traffic as there are no plans for expansion. Should mention that his existing business is just up the road, off of Starkey Road, from this location, and the area's owned industrial. The applicant outlined his intention to relocate his business to the parcel, emphasized that despite the change in location, the fundamental nature of his business would remain largely unchanged. Also stressed that his current business premises, which is off of Starkey Lane, which is off Starkey Road, are already used as Starkey Road, negating any substantial increase in traffic. His business is primarily engaged in landscaping, planting, demolition, and irrigation work. He confirmed that he would not be storing mulch or gravel on the property, and it doesn't show. There are no storage areas shown on the concept plan for any kind of bulk storage. He also explained that they may make daily trips to landfill and dispose of any waste generated by their operations. So, typically, they'll go out, get the materials, go to the site, do the work. So, planning commission discussed the floodplain regulations, zoning districts where construction yard is allowed, the nature of the landscaping business, stockpiling of materials, the economic opportunity areas in the 2005 comp plan, the ones in the 2005 comp plan are the ones for the 98 plan, the purpose statement of the I1 district, the visibility from Starkey Road, proposed buffers and surrounding zoning, impacted zoning on this parcel of I1. So, the planning commission did recommend approval. It was a split vote from C1 to I1 with the following proffered condition, and this was offered by the property owner as a condition. So, the property owner hereby proffers that the property shall only be developed and used for the following purposes: general office, medical office, business or trade schools, communication services, garden center, personal improvement services, and veterinary hospital clinic. In addition to the uses listed above, the property owner proffers that a construction yard may be allowed on the property with an approved special use permit. So, limiting the uses on the property with the proffered condition, and then also, the planning commission recommended a condition associated with a special use permit for a construction yard, saying that it shall be developed in substantial forms with the concept plan provided in your packet. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Mahoney, this is your district. Do you have any questions for staff?
No questions. I think not only me, but other board members have communicated with Mr. Thompson and asked him a variety of questions with respect to many of the questions raised by the citizens in their emails. So, I think Philip has responded to all of them. So, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Radford?
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, pull up your proffered condition a little more time, if you can. That looks like the same proffered condition we used before, except we added that comma and that, or that sentence at the end. Is that correct?
No, that's what they provided.
Okay. But I remember us rezoning that, and we had the same proffered condition that...
This property has had a whole history of action on it.
Yeah.
It had, I want to say it's had four or five actions on this property over time. There's been rezonings and proffers and removal of proffers, and then there's a special use permit with conditions, and then those conditions were removed, and it's seen quite a bit of activity over the years. But the last action that the property owner, Michelle Minehart, did was remove conditions from the property that allowed the language club to go in there. There was a...
That's what I'm remembering.
Yeah. So, there was an action, then I'd say the past three to five years, probably, maybe longer, I don't know, of an action on that property to remove restrictions, therefore it opened it up for more uses in the C1 district.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Norris.
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, could you pull the slide up that shows the sketch of what the property's gonna look like back in the beginning? Yeah, right there. Someone sent in some comments, and I want to read some of them.
Sure.
"We appreciate his planning, we appreciate that the petitioner is planning to plant a tree buffer of Leland Cypress trees extending from the front of the house on the south side."
So, if you look at what's kind of the dark green?
The dark green.
So, there's a 50-foot in length buffer that's gonna be the evergreen trees of Leland Cypress. And then if you look just below the existing access drive, there's two more, which kind of tie in. So, what they're trying to do is kind of shield the equipment from Starkey Road.
Yeah, I understand. They're trying to shield the equipment behind it.
Correct.
Coming, especially when you drive down Starkey South.
Correct.
Okay. And those other light, I guess you'd call them almost pale green, those are smaller evergreens. Is that correct?
Yeah, those are existing, I believe, is what's there.
Are they pencil hollies? Or what do they call them? Evergreen shrubs?
Yeah, evergreen shrubs are already existing.
Which will have a 12 to 18-inch diameter.
Right.
They write that it doesn't create any visual buffer for the area behind the house traveling south, but I would say to you that the house itself would be buffer enough for what's behind the house.
Yeah. So, I think that what you will see is probably only where the access roads are, be what the sight lines are back to that. And I imagine that, again, the intent is, the way I understand it, is his employees drive to the site, park, get the equipment, go to their job sites.
Right.
So, the equipment's only gonna be parked there at night into the morning when they're gonna remove that from going out and doing whatever work they have that day.
Okay, that answers my questions. I think that, that those two, especially looking south, will buffer the back of the house, and the house itself plays buffering behind it, so that satisfies me.
So, you all have had your questions answered? No more questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it. So, now we can hear from the petitioner. If you would, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Hugo Jimenez. I live at 8897 Roanoke Rock, Elliston. I am the owner of Enchantalones Landscaping. And like, you know, some people already know me from last time. I'm here to seek an approval for the property in 5681 Starkey Road. Like I said last time, we are located already in Starkey Road, oh, Starkey Lane. And we've been doing our business from that address for the last 20-some years. And people say there would be more traffic put in in this Starkey Road, but won't be anymore because we already there. Hopeful I can get approval so we can keep doing our business from that location and the same time support our neighborhood. I think that's all I can say for today.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Mr. Norris?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So, at this time, we'll go into our public hearing. We'll open the public hearing, and just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. We have a light system. I'm gonna try to get it right this time. When it turns green, it's the start of your three minutes. I believe the yellow light means that you have one minute remaining, and the red light means your time is up. And I would ask that you stay within that three minutes. We have seven people who have signed up to speak. So, we'll start from the beginning, and when you come forward, if you would, please state your name and address, just for the record, for the audio record. So, the first on the list is Steve Kronemeyer. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, supervisors. My name is Steve Kronemeyer, and I live in Chantilly Place at 5615 Rockbridge Court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this request this evening. And as you can probably already tell, I'm a slow talker, but I'll try to keep with the three minutes as best I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. I oppose this request for two reasons. First, its negative impact on the quality of life for those of us residing at this particular end of Starkey Road. Second, this rezoning request does not comply with Roanoke County's comprehensive plan or with the requirements for zoning as an I1 low-intensity industrial zone. Please allow me to elaborate on these two points if I could. First, to neighborhood impact. The impact on our neighborhood is really a tale of almost two different and completely different Starkey roads. The other end of Starkey near 419 is a busy corridor and heavily developed with a mix of commercial and industrial properties. In fact, this end of Starkey is where the applicant currently has his business. On the other hand, our end of Starkey Road from Crescent Boulevard to Buck Mountain Road is two-lane, quiet, and primarily residential. It's as if we're talking about two completely different Starkey roads. A landscaping operation with 11 trailers, seven pickup trucks, three dump trucks, and excavators will bring unwanted traffic, noise, and dust in as wholly out of character with our end of Starkey Road. And as was mentioned, the applicant already operates at the other end of Starkey Road, but this will bring more traffic to our end of Starkey Road. And these vehicles and the equipment entering Starkey Road, right at the mouth of the new roundabout that's under construction during the morning and the afternoon commuting hours when the workers are coming to and from this site, will create an accident hazard and totally undermine the traffic flow and benefits of the new roundabout that's being built. And those living across the street from this parcel, as I do, will see our quality of life and property values decline by introducing industrial zoning to a quiet residential neighborhood. Turning to the zoning issues, first, the comprehensive plan indicates future land use designation at the parcel is core with appropriate land use types, including retail, personal services, offices, and institutional uses. This request, as described earlier, falls in the category of a limited industrial use. According to the comprehensive plan, limited industrial uses are only allowed in core areas that have been designated as economic opportunity areas. This parcel is not located in a designated economic opportunity area. And the fact that this requirement dates to 1998 doesn't change the fact that it's still a requirement of the comprehensive plan. For this reason alone, this request should be denied. Second, the verbiage for Section 30-61 for Low Intensity Industrial Districts notes that these areas are primarily designated based on the suitability of the land in terms of slope and freedom from flooding. As the floodplain map clearly has shown, the vast majority of this parcel is in a floodway or a floodplain. So, from a flooding perspective, the parcel does not qualify to be rezoned to I1.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, but we are a minute over. If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. If I could, in summary, ask that you deny this application due to its nonconformance with both the county's comprehensive plan and the requirements for I1 zoning, its violation of Roanoke County's stormwater regulations, and how it will totally change the character of our neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity. Consider my comments.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Van Ness. If you would state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Kathy Van Ness. I also live at 5615 Rockbridge Court. My husband and I recently moved there, and we attended the public hearing earlier in the month. I'd also just like, for the record, to state my opposition to the proposal. Steve has covered a lot of the things we've talked about in our household and with our neighbors there as we've gotten to know the area. I just wanted to point out a couple of other things from my perspective. The water issue within the floodplain. In the, in the hearing last time, we know, we were informed that there would not be any sort of stockpiling of materials which could be used, could be in danger of being run off during a flood situation. And it wasn't clear how that would be monitored. We know that landscaping companies, that's just part of their trade, and I can't imagine that there would not be a time when a trailer would be filled with mulch, or there might not be materials on that site even temporarily. And so, I just wondered how that would be monitored by the county to ensure that that would not endanger the watershed there in the event of a flood. Given this fragile state of all of our waters, why would the county purposely endorse a known risk if we could avoid something like that? And how would that be monitored? The other item, during the hearing, I learned that the applicant operated a similar construction yard. The one person who spoke in support of that application was the owner of that property, who would certainly have a personal benefit from the rezoning taking place. And I just wondered, given the concern of the current permanent residents who live in that area, how the business opportunity of one person who's not a resident of the county could outweigh the concerns of the many, many people who have expressed a concern in that area, who make their homes there, who own property there, and are concerned about their property values. And so, I just wanted the board of supervisors to consider, you know, who their allegiance is to residents, current residents of the county, or a business owner who's already operating in the county, already paying taxes presumably on his business, but the many real estate taxpayers in the area that would outweigh the one business who presumably would continue to operate at his current site if he's not issued this rezoning request. So, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our third speaker is Fred Corbett. If you'd come forward, please. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Fred Corbett. I live at 5511 Sterns Avenue, which is a couple of blocks away from the proposed rezoning location. I sent all of the supervisors a letter, an email, excuse me, an email. Did y'all, did anybody get a chance to read that? Okay, so without, I won't go through a lot of detail with that then, since you've already read that.
Read them all.
I'm sorry?
We read them all.
Okay. So, if you read all my points there, another thing I wanted to bring up, too, was, it was mentioned earlier that the planning commission approved this on a vote, but the vote was, it was two to one, so it's not really unanimous, or it was unanimous, but I guess it was two to one, but it was, some of the commissioners weren't there, the planning commission, just wanted to point that out. But I, I just do have some strong feelings about this, and I did send y'all some pictures of the conceptual maps as well, and I pointed some things out there about what other companies have done in the area to shield their property and things like that. Having lived in that community for many years, and my grandparents had that property over there for years, I bought, I bought a lot from them and built my house back in 1989, but I have another house, I've been back there since 1976. So, I've been in the neighborhood for a long, long time, my whole life, basically, adult life. But I just hate to see anything like this change to our, our community. It's a very close-knit community. Most of the citizens have been there for years and years. We were very conscientious about what we do, pay our tax and all that, so we'd just like for you to consider denying this request because we want to keep our neighborhood like it's been for, for eons. So, thank you, folks, for the time.
Thank you very much. Next is Michelle Minehart. Next is Michelle Meinhardt. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Michelle Meinhardt. I live at 1486 Hollybrook Road, Salem, Virginia, which is Roanoke County. I have a house in Roanoke County, and I'm very vested in our community. I am hoping to sell this property to my landscaper, who's been providing landscaping services in Roanoke County for quite a few years. He's done a great job of maintaining the property. It looks great now, and it has for the entire time that I've owned it. You know, he had to ask for rezoning to the industrial because to operate a landscaping business, he wasn't allowed to park his trucks with the current commercial. But I'm sure you know that that whole area around that building is commercial, and I just so like to offer my, except for across the street, is a residential home, but then commercial all to the sides. And I think he's done a great job for our community, and I hope he's able to just continue operating his business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Linda Kolnog, and my husband and I live at 5644 Rockbridge Court, and I'm president of the Chantilly Place Homeowners Association. Our little street is made up of 17 condos, and our street is directly across from Friendship Rehab on Starkey Road. I am here to represent the people that live on this quiet street. I would like everyone that lives on Rockbridge Court to raise their hand to show that we do not support this rezoning from commercial to industrial district so that a special use permit to operate a construction yard can be attained. The main concern is letting a construction landscape company move in across the small bridge from the much-needed roundabout that the government is putting in at Starkey and Buck Mountain Road to relieve the traffic congestion. This business is going to cause traffic problems when dump trucks, pickup trucks with trailers and pickups with equipment try to turn left onto their property after they have come through the roundabout from Buck Mountain. This property is sitting in a floodplain and is relatively flat. Number three of Section 30-74, Floodplan Overlay District of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance states, "Stockpiling of materials in the floodway is prohibited." Who is going to regulate this? Do you think that he is not going to store mulch, gravel, and et cetera if he gets a good deal? We have a lot of small-to-large vehicle traffic noise, and traffic backs up to our street several times a day. We don't need more large-vehicle traffic to cause problems on Starkey Road. Also, our concerns are pollution, equipment leaks, especially into nearby creek, noise, dust, and being an eyesore. This is a residential area from our street up to Starkey, and we would like to see most of it stay that way south of us. We are asking you to vote no on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lou McClung.
Hello, I'm Lou McClung. I live at 1486 Hollybrook Road in Salem, which is also in Roanoke County. There have been some comments about the floodway and floodplain. I own McClung Lumber. The structure there was recently burned to the ground, but we operated in a floodplain for many years. In fact, my first day of bringing the computer online was a flood of 85, not a good day. And we got flooded. We had about three feet of water. There is no better business in the world than one that can get off the property quickly. My dad's car got off the property by going down the creek next to the building. So flood, when it floods, you don't want to be on it. The fact of stockpiling material and all those things, I think the neighbors will be vigilant enough to monitor that type of activity, so I don't think that that's a reason for concern. The whole point of the roundabout that's going in is to reduce traffic. The only problem I've seen with roundabouts is people not knowing how to negotiate them.
That's true.
And that is, it says yield, not stop. You put your signal on when exiting so that people know whether they can enter. It's a pretty easy process. The stop signs alone that they've put in for the process have helped the traffic. Traffic backs up on Starkey Road heavily. That would be a problem for anybody. Anytime I tried to get out of that property, I had, it was just waiting for someone to be off their phone long enough to let me through. But now, the roundabout will take care of that stack. So I do feel that this business is not going to be an impact. In fact, if you drove it and looked now, there's a light buffer of trees currently in the area where he's proposing to improve that buffer. And as you come down the property, you see the house, and then you see the, it's very little bit of driveway. If you're paying attention to what's in front of you, which is also a rarity at times, then by the time you can look back on the property, you've got to be doing that, or the buffer that's there already is quite adequate. So I think the increased buffer, and I do feel that he added all those extra vehicles and things so that vigilant neighbors wouldn't say, oh, you only showed three trailers before, and now you've got four. So I think he loaded the property with, you know, what he could put there so that he could hit the max. This business is not going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood, and I hope you will pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is Tommy Smith.
Thank you, folks. My name is Tommy Smith. My wife and I live at 5627 Rockbridge Court in Chantilly Place, right around the corner from the proposed site that's in question. First of all, thank you for your service to the county, and thank you for allowing just regular citizens like us to express what we think about things. Great country to live in. I wanted you to know that my wife and I are strongly opposed to this proposed construction. I'm going to try to give you five reasons, unless the clock runs out on me. I wrote it down, so I won't ramble, okay? First of all, locating a construction yard at the proposed address will affect the property values and the way of life for the folks who live there. In Chantilly Place, I'm selfish, because that's where I live, but right across from that is Crescent Heights, one of the oldest communities in South County, and they're going to be affected by this, and have already been affected by some of the changes that have taken place. Other neighborhoods not too far away that may not even know what's going on are going to be affected by the next thing I want to talk about, which is the flow of the traffic. I'm sorry, but this construction will increase the flow of heavy equipment on our end of Starkey Road. We can't do a thing about what's going on on the other end, because it's already there, but we can stand up and object to having our end of Starkey Road end up just like the other end of Starkey Road and have our community affected. And we are thrilled with the roundabout that's going in there. It's been needed. We're looking forward to it, but negotiating a roundabout, most of us do know how to negotiate a roundabout, but it's going to be difficult to negotiate a roundabout with 10 dump trucks going through it at peak traffic times, like in the morning, people going to work, school, are coming home in the evening, and the workmen coming in at the same time. So it is going to create a problem. And the problem with the extra traffic is also going to create a safety hazard. I'm a selfish man. I've got six grandchildren that drive through there, and they come to see their grandmother to eat chicken, and I hate the thought that they're going to dodge 10 dump trucks to get there. And I'm serious about that, and we all worry about our family when they're on the road. And I do think that it is going to be a safety hazard, having all of that extra traffic in that area. Also concerned that changing this zoning, making this zoning request take place, is going to make it a lot harder to ever say no to the next person that comes along, regardless of which area they might be in. And our neighborhoods can just keep on eroding from businesses that are moving into them. And I think everything else that I have written down here has already been said, and I'm not going to bore you for hearing it over and over, but I just want you to know that we strongly object to this construction there. And this has nothing to do with Mr. Jimenez and his integrity or his honesty. He's promised that he'll keep this place clean and go. I know he'll do everything in his power to do it, but the very nature of that business is going to be very, very difficult to do that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. So I will now close the public hearing comments. Let's move back to the board. Mr. Mahoney, any comments?
I have a few, Madam Chairman. Before the board entertains a motion, I'd like to hear what my other board member colleague said, but I've kept a bunch of notes from items that people have said and emails that have come in to me. Let me walk through some of those. I think a lot of this began maybe five or six months ago. I think Ms. Meinhardt called me, and she and I had a couple conversations five, six months ago. And I indicated to her at that time that, I said she's probably going to have a problem because she'd have a lot of citizens in opposition, but I also indicated to her that, as I looked at that area of Starkey and Buck Mountain, it was a combination of a variety of different land uses, of commercial and industrial. And I was really focusing on Starkey as you went, I guess it's to the west, towards Merriman Road and Penn Forest Elementary, where you had Crescent Heights Garage, you had the Greenbrier Nursery, you had Virginia Varsity Storage, which is an industrial use, you had the Rockydale Quarry Facility, you had the company for the collision center that fixed all the cars. And as you go over the railroad tracks, you had a small industrial building, and then across the street, you had Starkey Park, and you also had Plastics One. So you had a mixture of commercial and industrial uses. So I suggested to Ms. Meinhardt that she ought to look at that, consider the opposition that she'd have, but I also suggested to her that I'd have to listen to what the citizens said at the public hearing. I told her I really didn't know what the land use determinants were at the time. I said, I have to look at the code and see what they were. And finally, I suggested to her that if she'd get with Mr. Jimenez and see if she'd be willing to include in proffers where you would eliminate many of the more objectionable industrial uses to try to limit the scope. And I believe she's done that, that Mr. Jimenez has done that. Listening to the citizens and reading their emails, I hear three major objections to the application. The first one is traffic, and I think there will be some negative traffic impacts, but at the same time, Mr. Jimenez is operating his existing business half mile up the road on Starkey. Now, that's different there, as Mr. Kronmeyer indicated. It's, Starkey there is four lanes wide, and this area is two lanes wide. And I think we all know, or at least if you live in that area, and I've lived here 38 years, and I probably go through that intersection four or five times a week, that part of Starkey and Buck Mountain is the shortcut. It's the cut-through. A lot of the trucks from the fuel terminal don't go out on 419. They go down Starkey, go down Buck Mountain to get on 220 heading south. And I know when my wife and I go to Walmart, we don't go down 419 and 220. We go down Starkey and Buck Mountain. So there is a tremendous amount of traffic there, and I would really hope that the roundabout solves a lot of that problem. And I have to give a lot of credit to Charlotte Moore, who was on the Board of Supervisors two seats back, because Charlotte began that process with VDOT to try to get a roundabout constructed. And they're doing it now, and we hope it'll be done next year. Is it supposed to be done 2024? I hope.
Early next year.
The second objection is flooding. If you look at the flood maps, almost all the properties in floodplain or floodway. I think what makes a difference, though, is, as was mentioned earlier, it's not as though the applicant is building a new building, which would be a problem and maybe potentially a violation, depending where you put it, in the floodway regulations. Most of the activity is going to be vehicles, and I think, as Mr. McClung indicated, you can move vehicles when it starts to flood. So while I understand the flooding problem, I think that can be minimized and alleviated. The one problem clearly would be if you don't get the vehicles out of the way in time, then you run the risk of gasoline, diesel, oil, fuel getting into that little creek, that little tributary that feeds Back Creek. The third big objection is the incompatibility of this use with the neighborhood, and that's, that I think is the real problem area. You have industrial use versus residential uses. And as I look at that, it's almost as though Starkey is the dividing line between the different uses, and on the west side of Starkey, you have more commercial and industrial uses. On the east side, on Starkey and then heading up Buck Mountain, you have more residential Although I was not on the board at the time, the county, I think, opened the door for more commercial and industrial uses when it rezoned the property for the Friendship Manor Rehab facility. And I think it also opened the door, probably correctly, when we rezoned the property for Virginia Varsity, that's around, back around the corner. So I think that adds to the compatibility mix of this area. I would hope that the Starkey Road could act as a dividing line between commercial and industrial and residential. But I understand the concern of the citizens that, once you open up that door, then it opens up the door to other uses kind of bleeding over, bleeding over that line. I think for us, for the board, I know in the past, if we had an application where it was in a land use designation of core, and you had a positive recommendation of the planning commission, and you had a positive staff recommendation, that's normally a slam dunk. That's normally approval. And so, quite frankly, I was ready to make a motion to approve this use. What tripped me up was, when you look at what we have to make findings on before we can support this, we have to make a finding that this use, quote, "will not result in substantial detriment to the community." I think this application touches all the bases except that one base. And so, in my perspective, I see and hear the potential detriment to the community. And for that reason, Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to deny this application because I think it will result in a substantial detriment to the community.
And so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
I will second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, wait a minute. Don't we get some other comments?
Sure, of course.
Someone in a hurry to go home? Boy, this has been a day.
It has.
Let's see. You know, this isn't even in my district, and that's how much paper we got just in this one hearing. Multiply that times about three or four. We had 638-page package to go through. I'd want you to know that you set a record in my mind. I don't think we had that much paper in a package since I've been here for six years. So what I'm trying to say, Mr. Thompson, is don't try to exceed that. Okay, you're not going to get any award for it. You're not paid by the, you're not paid by the page. And so, with that said, I might even suggest that you send the PowerPoints out a little earlier next time so we can digest it slowly, leading up to the meeting, and we won't have to spend Sunday afternoon and Monday night and Tuesday working. to spend Sunday afternoon and Monday night and Tuesday working on this. Now, I went through this because I used to live in this area years ago off Buck Mountain Road in Brandon Wood, built a house in Kings Chase, never did move into it. Moved to Knoxville, Tennessee, which was a better move at the time for me and my family, came back to Roanoke. So I'm very familiar with the area, driven the roads hundreds of times, going to and from work downtown. My personal opinion, the site's very intense. It's very small for what, for what I see, and I drove by it Sunday, slowly looked at it. Traffic's congested, I understand, but what, so I'd give that a negative. The buffer that's planned, I give it a positive. Looks like there's some good buffer there. And I'll have to tell you this, the floodplain, if this was me, I wouldn't build, I wouldn't build a chicken coop in a floodplain, period. So, you know, but to each his own. If that's the way you want to invest your money, that's your business. Traffic is the same amount of traffic that exists today because the gentleman, the petitioner, has a facility already on that, on that road. That's a positive. There's no storage that's going to be there, so from what I understand, that's a positive because some people were concerned about that. And the folks at Kings Chase that wrote in, I'll have to tell you what, I was impressed with the fact that, you know, if this doesn't pass, or if this does pass, we'd like to see some buffer, and the buffer was addressed, and there was one other item, too. I thought that was pretty, pretty reasonable, and so for that reason, I plan on supporting this, because I'm going to tell you what, at the end of the day, it doesn't have a thing to do with your evaluation of your property. And if you don't believe me, you can ask anyone on our staff, including the assessor's office, and they'll tell you the same thing. So I think this is going to be okay in the long run, and everything's going to be good. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Radford.
Thank you, Chair. So I want to add my comments, too. You know, I think this is a great plan to reuse this property. It has been vacant for a long time. It's not an eyesore. I mean, I remember removing those proffered conditions, so it would give the owner the ability to, to re-lease it and reuse it. I think it's being treated unfairly, being called industrial. I think, Mr. Thompson, you said it was really commercial, correct?
That was pretty correct. We were having more.
Thank you. So it trips over because of the parking by the vehicles overnight. I have some commercial propping, and people pick their, park their vehicles, which they're not supposed to, so I'll have to remind them that they're going to trip me over to industrial if they, if they don't stop doing that. I agree, I don't think this will affect the real estate value. All you have to do is look at your assessment that you just received several months ago. We have a housing problem, a shortage, and our values in Roanoke County are going up right now. I think the roundabout, by the way, I'm very familiar with Starkey Road. I use it all the time, passing through, going down to Franklin County or going back over to Boone's Mill. I probably travel on it at least three or four times a week. I have a rental warehouse out there halfway between the two ends of the, of Starkey. My father and also, my father and I also built South Mountain Village, which was patio homes we built probably eleven years, well, maybe twelve, fifteen years ago. Very, very successful. But I think that roundabout, from my time building those, that roundabout is really going to help that congestion at that point. And I agree with Mr. North, even though Mr. Jimenez is already at one end of Starkey, he still travels in both directions. So if he's going to move down to this point, he's still going to travel in two directions. So I don't see where the traffic is going to, to increase. And Mr. Mahoney, you're right. When you go from the west side of Starkey, you can see the influence of commercial and industrial. And I think that is the dividing line. I don't think it's going to harm the residential value up there. As you go up Buck Mountain, you have a new house being built there, so I think all that's, that's pretty well established. So that's, that's my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Peters, any comments? So there's a motion on the floor. There's also been a second. Would the clerk call the roll, please? And this was for denial. That's correct. Mr. Peters?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
No.
Mr. Radford?
No.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Is there another motion? Would anyone like to make an affirmative motion?
Yes, I'll make a affirmative motion to approve the zoning request.
Do we, do we need to look at the official way to make a motion?
With the one proffered condition.
And the condition for the special use permit.
Right.
Would you like me to read that, Madam Chair?
Please.
I'd be happy to. So the motion, the sample motion provides-
Can't hear you. Turn the mic up.
Yes, sir. The sample motion provides that the, that Mr. Radford finds that the proposed rezoning request, number one, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, and two, will not result in substantial detriment to the community. He therefore moves that the board approve the rezoning request as it has been requested with the following proffered condition. One, the property owner hereby proffers that the property shall only be developed and used for the following purposes: general office, medical office, business or trade schools, communication services, garden center, personal improvement services, and veterinary hospital clinic. In addition to the uses listed above, the property owner proffers that a construction yard may be allowed on the property with an approved special use permit. Mr. Radford further finds that the proposed special use permit, one, meets the requirements of Section 30 hyphen 19 hyphen one of the Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article Four, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance. Two, is in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, and three, will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. He therefore moves that the board approve the petition to obtain the special use permit with the following condition. One, the site shall be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plan titled Conceptual Landscape Plan, prepared by Fiddlehead Landscape and Garden Design, dated March 20th, 2023.
So there is a motion to approve. There's been a second comment?
No. I got a comment. So I thought the understanding was it was also not going to be a construction yard, not a storage yard. There's no storage on the property.
That there was going to be no storage.
That's not what was in the proffered conditions.
What's in a proffered condition?
I don't know that it was proffered.
I do not believe that that was proffered. I believe that was just an explanation or representation by the potential property owner. So it would not be enforceable. It would just be his word that that would be the case.
So there is a motion to approve. There's been a second. Would the clerk please call the roll? Are you finished with your comment, Mr. Peters? You're vacillating.
I am.
Do you want to amend the special use permit? You can't amend the proffer, but you can add a condition to the SUP.
That's true.
I'm not, I misunderstood before. I thought it was with the condition that that was part of this, that it would not be a storage yard or whatever. So if we can amend that to include it, I would prefer that.
So I'll need some guidance, Mr. Lubek. If there's a motion on the floor, it doesn't include it, could Mr. Radford go back and amend his-
That's right.
As, since it's a special use permit, you can add a condition for a storage yard or for no storage allowed, should you desire.
Are you talking about materials stored on site?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So the way we, kind of from a staff perspective, looked at it, it doesn't show any of that on the concept plan.
Right, it doesn't.
It does not. Therefore, if there was substantial conformity with it, you would not be allowed to do so. But if it makes more sense, you want to add a condition that there shall be no storage of materials on site, you can add that as a condition to the special use permit.
So here's my question. What keeps him from getting three tractor, three dump truck, dump trucks full of mulch and dumping on the property and storing it there?
What stops him from being in violation of the special use permit?
If you amend it. You have to amend the special use permit.
To be able to do it, yes.
Well, not to be able to do it, because it's what he just read there, said he can do it.
Right. From our perspective, from a staff perspective, it doesn't show any storage of materials on site.
Right, but the proffers that a construction yard may be allowed on the property with an approved special use permit. So what, what we're saying, if I understand, Mr. Mahoney, is you amend, you amend the motion to put no storage allowed under the conditions of a special use permit. That's what we're talking about.
But if you look at the, the concept plan, the conceptual landscape plan prepared by Fiddlehead Landscape and Garden, it has no, no storage on there.
Correct.
So in essence, it's already covered.
Correct.
Yeah, but for clarity's sake, remanding the special use permit would make it abundantly clear, so there's no discussion or ambiguity going forward. I'd certainly think that would be what we should do.
So how are we going to monitor that?
So my recommendation there will be, under the, the motion to approve, the petition to obtain the special use permit with the following condition, and then, as read, the site shall be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plan titled, as I previously read, by Fiddlehead Landscape and Garden Design, dated March 20th, 2023. In addition, no storage of materials shall be permitted on site.
That sounds good.
I'm good with that.
Okay, yeah, I'll amend my motion to add that language.
To include that. So an amended motion is now going forward. It's been seconded. Are you satisfied?
I'm good.
Okay. So would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
No.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all being here. We appreciate it. So moving on, we have citizen comments and communications. Madam Clerk, are there any, is there anyone that has signed up for citizen comments? So item N, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. North, you are going first tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On May 16th, I participated in speaking to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, VDOT, and Secretary of Transportation's meeting for the region that we're in here in the Salem District, the Salem Civic Center, concerning specifically smart scale projects and Interstate 81. The first seven speakers that spoke, six of the seven speakers addressed I-81 concerns. And secondly, I've been talking to some citizens about booking events at the library, and I wish the library director was here to hear this. I participated in a conference call recently concerning the Hollins Library and discussions on future plans. And I made mention on there about, well, don't you have a reservation system that you can, citizens can go online and see openings for booking a meeting room? Even paying for the meeting room in advance, whatever. I didn't really get a clear answer, and so it's come up again that if I want to book the meeting room at Hollins for an event, I can't do so greater than ninety days. And I don't know why that is, and neither did the citizen that asked me. And so, secondly, I don't understand why, I thought we could get citizens to use an online registration system, but I was told it's not working very well. Lots of ambiguity there. So here's what I would like. I would like a clear succinct memo outlined to each one of our board members as to, number one, how a online reservation system to book a meeting room operates within our library system if we have one, that is, an online system. And two, I want the question answered, why we can't book meetings greater than nine days out? Because there's some people that like to have meetings every quarter or every six months, and they can't do it. So I'm just saying that we need to be a little more fluid and have good reasons that, that exist for us not being able to do this if we've got this system. Maybe we don't have the system. Maybe staff recommends we don't have it, but it's about as clear as mud, and I need some clarity on it because I keep getting this question asked of people in the Hollins District. Lastly, some information that was shared today in Richmond at the Commonwealth Transportation Board, while there was much, especially concerning smart scale review and improvements going forward, which I won't get into, Roanoke ridership in 2023 versus 2019 for Amtrak is up 57%. Twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four riders thus far, January through March, compared to seventeen thousand, five hundred and nine in 2019. Folks, I'm going to tell you something right now. That is a great success story. As a matter of fact, I wanted to pound my chest and say this was the Roanoke area, but Norfolk ridership is up 81.2%. They've got thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-two so far this year compared to twenty thousand, one thirty-two the whole year of 2019. So coming out of COVID, leaving it behind, we, in the inception of many of these routes, it is absolutely a great success story. Can't do anything but justify extending this one day, probably beyond Christiansburg all the way to Bristol. So it's a great, great story. The only problem I have with the Amtrak situation has been brought to light by several folks in the Benton District who take the train. The parking down there is horrible. Absolutely mind-boggling how people will continue to ride it. In fact, I'm almost of a mindset to drive to Lynchburg where the parking's free and less hassle, because I can probably get home about thirty minutes sooner at the end of the day rather than having to drive back from Roanoke. And I'll just tell you this right now, we need to speak to our colleagues over in the city and find out how to make this more user-friendly, because it is an absolute debacle. We had people go there, when I took the train, they went with us, they got fined almost a hundred and forty dollars because they claimed they didn't pay for their two days, which was something like, I don't know, six, seven dollars a night. Mine went through okay. I paid for the first night. The second night I never got charged for, when I thought I was. So, you know, I paid seven, they, they get a hundred, they got a ticket. They got a ticket, a virtual ticket for a hundred and forty. They had to call up and debate it with the city or whomever's managing the parking down there. And the parking down there is like a cluster. This one manages that, this one manages this, this one that. I'm going to tell you what, if, if people don't get dropped off and have to park down there, you don't know whether you're paying the right fare or not. And at six o'clock in the morning, downloading a software package is absolutely, it's challenging. At six in the morning for some people, they aren't able to wait. And it took two to get, to get it downloaded for some instances. So we went from paying for it to now having to download a software package, and you get no heads up on this from Amtrak because there's no communication between them and the station locations, i.e. the city. Folks, I'm going to tell you what, this is a great story. It can backfire quickly if people have to go through a, if everyone that travels gets billed a hundred and forty dollars like this couple from Benton, you know, I wouldn't travel no more. I would just consider driving probably. But it's a good thing, so let's get it fixed. If you're talking to any, Mr. Cal, he might, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you what, if I see him before you do, I see Sherman, I'm going to talk to him about it. It's, it's a joke. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Nothing.
Mr. Radford?
Real short, honey, I'll be home. Happy anniversary, forty-two years today.
They always come over here to me.
We were, we were both working tonight. She's finishing up at eight o'clock. I would have gone home early, five more minutes, but Mr. North had to.
You can get up there. You know, Mr. Radford, you could skip this meeting tonight, too.
We all, we all have fun up here.
Sad story.
Yeah. We have fun up here. That's all I have.
Mr. Peters?
I just have a couple of quick things. First, he's not here with us tonight, but I do want to, I do appreciate Sam Wall, his article he had in the newspaper a couple of days ago about the challenges that we've got with our neighboring jurisdiction. I think he wrote a very good article, and I think there's more to come there. Yesterday, we had the great pleasure of opening the renovated Mount Pleasant Library. Long time coming. I was glad to see it finally get across the finish line, and it was a beautiful job by all involved. They did, they did a great job. And then I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I know the guys aren't here now, but this is EMS week, so if you're out and about and you see some of the career medics and volunteer medics and EMTs, love to know you appreciate them. And like I said, last week, we finished up with the police week, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I'll yield the rest of my time to Mr. North.
I've used your time.
I think that's all we have for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North? Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, we are adjourned.
You always have something.